Hillsborough County has launched its redesigned website, hcfl.gov. The new domain boasts a variety of improvements to search ability, page layout, navigation, and website speed. The revamped website features robust search functions, making it easier for users to find the information they need. Whether searching for essential government services, paying water bills, accessing event information, learning how to acquire a new trash can, or identifying evacuation zones, the enhanced search functionality ensures quick access to relevant content. Hcfl.gov's new design features a clean, modern, and intuitive layout. The streamlined design enhances user friendliness for easy navigation and access to important resources. Navigating the website is now more straightforward than ever. Users can seamlessly move between different sections, departments, and services while interacting with information and resources. Ready to see what all the fuss is about? Head to hcfl.gov and discover your best source for all things Hillsborough County.
Psst, hey. Would you do me a favor? Grab your phone or smart device and open up that camera. Then point it right here at the QR code. Do you have it? I'll wait a second. When you see the link pop up on your screen, give it a tap. You ready? Boom! Welcome to the Hillsborough County official YouTube channel. We've got all sorts of videos here, all about what makes our community such an awesome place. From local events and community highlights, to what's in the perfect Cuban sandwich, we've got it all. We're always adding new things, so while you're here, be sure to subscribe and hit that notification bell so you'll never miss a new video. Here's that QR code again, just in case you missed it. Go ahead and check it out. Ooh. This must have fallen out of that video. This really is the perfect Cuban sandwich.
Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangling machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags!
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No, Mommy, no plastic bags.
Do your part to keep our recycling bag free. Trash the Tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit tampa bay recycles.org.
These are the jobs you may not see every day, but just know we're working hard to make Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play. Subscribe to our YouTube page for more great county-related videos, only on HTV.
Oh, man, here comes Arnie again. Check this out.
It's Arnie. What are you doing? You made a mess in my hallway. Hey, Arnie. Looks like you could use a hand. Let me help you.
You don't need superpowers to be a hero. Help make Hillsborough bully-free.
Good afternoon, welcome to the February 29th, 2024 Land Development Code Text Amendment Workshop. Before we get started, I want to read into the record from Commissioner Pat Kemp. Please be advised that I am unable to attend the Thursday, February 29th, 2024 DOC CLC workshop due to scheduling conflict. Please read the reason for my absence into the record. And with that, before I pass it off to staff to introduce the first item, can we have the clerk give us a roll call to establish a course?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hagan?
Here.
Cameron Sepeda?
Here, present. Thank you.
Cohen?
Here.
Kemp? Myers?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Wollstel? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, staff, introduce first item.
Commissioners, Israel Monsanto will have a PowerPoint and run through each of these items. I would just like to note a couple of things in advance that we do have. We've been working with some of our stakeholders and partners, including EPC, on some of these amendments, and we are going to continue to work with them, including holding some public outreach, public outreach meeting for any stakeholders to provide input on these amendments. I'd also like to note that we are planning and including one more amendment in this round that's not noted on this agenda. And that is a change to our development process for county design-build projects. We've been in recent communication with Water Resources and Mr. Cassidy regarding an upcoming project that we think will be beneficial to accommodate the timing of that through a change in our development timing. We will be bringing that amendment back at a future time. At this point, we're proposing that it only apply to county projects, and that will allow us to establish a model and assess how that may work on a broader, broader group of potentially private projects. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair, for that indulgence, and I'll ask Israel Monsanto to begin the presentation on the amendments. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Israel Monsanto Development Services have a presentation on the screen. I believe you can see it. Yes. This is round one, Land Development Code Text Amendments, 2024. We will have a public outreach meeting, as Mr. Gonzalez stated, that will be on April 2nd. First volley hearing in front of the board will be on May 9th. Consistency finding by the Planning Commission is set for April 8th, and the second and final adoption here will be on June 6th. Today, we have in front of you a total of seven amendments. The first three items on the agenda were part of last year's first round of text amendments, and these are back now in front of you. The other four items are being introduced in this round as a new for this year. The first item is LDC 230138, and this is the vaping retail shop standards. This amendment will add development standards to the location and permitting of the establishment that sells vaping products within 500 feet of public or private elementary, middle, and secondary schools. It will require a conditional zoning permit to be approved for the establishment of within 500 feet of public or private schools. These shops within 500 feet of a school would be a permissible conditional use in commercial neighborhood, commercial general, commercial intensive, and manufacturing districts, and PDs as well, which permits uses allowed in the zoning districts above. It will prohibit vaping retail shops within more than 20% of its total monthly retail sales of vaping products within 500 feet of public or private schools. Vaping retail shops with more than 20% of its total monthly retail sales of vaping products located within 500 feet of public or private schools that were permitted use and in lawful operation by the effective date of this amendment would be deemed a legal nonconforming use. And this determination will need to be made through a submittal of a determination of nonconformity application by the property owner or the operator of the facility. The determination will identify the maximum percentage of total monthly retail sales that may be derived from the sale of vaping products, and the permitted sales percentage will not be eligible for an increase or expansion by the Board of County Commissioners. This amendment will also provide definitions of vaping retail shops, vaping product, and vapor generating electronic device. And a new conditional use section in our Land Development Code will be added 611136. The next item is LDC 230311.
Hold on one moment. Do we have any questions or comments on the first item? Okay, bar none. Please continue.
Thank you, sorry about that. Next item, LDC 230311. This is Comprehensive Plan or CPA with related rezoning applications and Planning Commission rezoning report filing deadline. This amendment will modify the procedures for amendments to official zoning atlas rezonings of the Land Development Code, specifically the consideration and final decision by the Board of County Commissioners when rezonings or major modifications applications are related to applications to amendments of the future of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan or CPAs. This amendment will also modify the filing date for reports prepared by Planning Commission staff for hearing applications, which is official zoning atlas or rezonings. It will establish the application proceedings, and this will be in accordance with the Land Development Code Part 100300, our contingent on a request to amend the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. It will be deemed withdrawn and no further effect in the event that such requested amendments to the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan is denied by the Board of County Commissioners, and no further proceedings or actions will be required. Also, this amendment would eliminate a 12-day calendar requirement for the filing of reports by the administrator, with administrator, by Planning Commission staff for land use hearing officer applications. Instead, this filing of these reports will be in accordance with the hearing master schedule, which is adopted by the administrator. And that concludes this presentation for this item.
Any questions or comments? Okay, next item.
Next item, LDC 230312, Yard Waste Air Curtain Incinerator. This amendment will modify the standards for yard waste air curtain incinerators or ACI facilities. It will distinguish between commercial facilities, which are said yard trash generated off-site for incineration, and those that are temporary and accessory to the clearing of land limited to the incinerators of yard trash generated onsite only. It will specify the commercial facilities will only be permissible as a conditional use, and this is only in the commercial intensive and manufacturing districts. The facility will be limited to the incineration of yard trash only, and the open pile burning will be prohibited. Facilities that are accessory to a land clearing or site development will be permitted in also in districts as a conditional use. It will also provide for minimum required setbacks, allow along boundaries and roadways, increase yard for residential developments or zoning, restricts the duration of the use for accessory or temporary ACIs, and it also requires screening by solid fence. Both type of facilities will require to meet all federal, local, and state of Florida developmental requirements and permits. Section 611103 from the Conditional Use and Special Uses of the Code pertaining to the regulation of the yard waste ACI will be replaced, adding the proposed standard for both commercial and ACIs. The original code changes proposal by staff will require conditional use approval for these facilities. There is a second option in the backup with language requiring the commercial facilities to be approved as part of a PD rezoning, and this second option is a result of initial comments that staff received by this commission when this item was presented previously last year. And that concludes the presentation for this item.
Any questions, comments?
Yes, I do. Commissioner Allen? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm assuming, I really don't know a lot about air curtain incinerators, other than what I saw with, there was a fiasco, I guess, with the last, the last board. So this has been run by EPC. All these changes are recommendations from our EPC. I guess I'm just trying to derive where this came from before, before we ultimately vote on it, that this is an environmental, has a, this will improve any environmental impacts, and our EPC has made recommendation. Is that correct?
Commissioner, this, we are working with EPC. I've had some discussions with, sorry if I'm not sure, with Janet Dougherty. We believe that there's some, some additional coordination that we can do, particularly on the temporary, the temporary uses. The, the issue, what brought this issue up initially was a proposed permanent commercial facility in an area that allowed agricultural zonings, but was agricultural zoning uses, but was actually in a fairly developed neighborhood area. There was concern expressed about that type of facility in that location, and for that reason, we're making the distinction between permanent commercial uses that bring in other materials from off-site versus those that are used onsite to dispose of, of materials in a way that is, if done correctly, is more environmentally beneficial than an open burn. So we are, to answer your question, we, we are, we have had some communications with EPC. We're going to continue to work with EPC and get some stakeholder input, and what, what we'll ultimately bring to the board for action, for adoption, will, will have been fully coordinated with EPC and any interested stakeholders. We are cognizant of the, of the use of air curtain incinerators for agricultural activities, and we want to be sure that what we are doing is aligned with what EPC does on the permitting side of these, and not create any unnecessary obstacles or challenges. But the main thrust, the main purpose of this was to draw a distinction that was not clear in the code right now between onsite uses for use on the site versus a commercial use that brings in material from, from other sites.
Okay, have we gotten stakeholder input? I'm just thinking also, not just the agriculture community that I represent, but also even up and down 301, or should I say 301, the business, the industrial areas off 41, 301 that, aren't these used over in those areas? Will those impact those stakeholders? Are they, have they given us any input, I guess? I just want to make sure we're not doing something where we're negatively impacting somebody's real estate in their, in their business, where they would have to actually even relocate. I just, I want to make sure that we have a good understanding of that before we move on.
Yes. So, Commissioner, our understanding is that there are only two permitted, permanent air curtain incinerator uses in the county at this time. Neither of them are in the 41 corridor, in those industrial areas. They are in more rural type areas, areas, I believe both of them are ag-zoned properties. But we are, we are also, as I said, we're cognizant of not, not having a negative impact on an existing business, you know, however it came into, into operation. And for that reason, we're, we also have that plan development option there. So if there is an existing use that is, that has perhaps not been, you know, fully recognized, that we, that we provide a path for them to remain in business and be in compliance with, with our, with our, both the permitting requirements and the code requirements. So we are very cognizant of not trying to put anybody out of business. Again, with only two that we've been able to identify that are in permanent business right now in an incorporated county.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great if you can make sure all the stakeholders, obviously, have an opportunity to come speak, and then also that EPC has given us a recommendation on this, because from what it sounds like too, we're not doing anything that we would be preempted from, from state law, from what I just heard in the presentation. So I guess really, I would just like to make sure before we're creating, you know, more regulation, that it's, it's something that environmentally will have a positive environmental impact, and I would really trust Janet or the folks over there at EPC to have to weigh in on it, that's all.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna jump in here just for, just for a second. And a great, great question by Commissioner Allen, and Adam did a great job with his explanation. I'm the one responsible for this, and the bottom line is, is to protect neighborhoods, because Adam said there's only two permanent ones in the county. There's never intent or to negatively impact businesses or commercial operations in any way. It's just add an extra layer to prevent one of these going in at a permanent basis, essentially in a neighborhood, that was, was really destroying them, and it was, it was an ugly scene. So that was the basis of it, but never to negatively impact commercial operation, business in, in any way. So just want to make sure that was, that was clear. But great, great, great questions. I don't, Ms. Lord, are you?
Yeah, I was just gonna tell you that our staff did make comments over a year ago, and then Adam and myself and technical staff were discussing yesterday. We're at the beginning of the process, Commissioner, so Adam and obviously the agency will work together. You know, again, we handle mostly these, we handle all ACIs, but we handle, the temporary uses are utilized frequently for a very short period of time by agriculture for development. And the public, they just shared a calendar with you, will have the opportunity to weigh in, so I'm sure they're doing stakeholder reach out as well to some of these industrial places. We have 11 yard waste sites, but none of them use, except the two permanent ACIs utilize air incinerator curtains, except those two that are identified, and I don't know how that will be handled with the LDC, whether they be grandfathered in or how that would work.
Thanks, Janet.
Next item.
Okay, moving on. The next item, 240340, Leave Local Act Administrator Approval, Land Use Restriction Agreement, Lura Process. This text amendment implements the Leave Local Act, which was recently created by Senate Bill 102 and establishes the standards and administrative procedures for new projects developed under the Leave Local Act and Land Use Restriction Agreement. LL projects will still adhere to all other limitations and requirements contained in Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and the proposed Land Development Code regulations for multifamily developments in area zone for such use. The amendment will provide the criteria and development requirements for a project to qualify under the Leave Local Act in the county, consistent with the statute. Establishes the procedures for review of new Leave Local Act projects in the county and the submittal requirements by applicants, and internal process by the Development Services Departments and the Affordable Housing Services. This amendment will create a new sections in our code, one for the development standards and criteria for these projects, including allowable zoning, districts maximum heights, parking requirements, density up to 35 dollars per acre, occupancy requirements for floral housing, and provide for buffering and screening between multifamily uses and land designated as heavy industrial in the future land use classification to mitigate impacts to these residential projects. The other LDC section that's being amended, it will incorporate the preview procedure that the internal departments will follow once these applications are filed by the applicants under the Leave Local Act. And that concludes this presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and Adam, too, on the, I'm noticing, and this may not necessarily be too related to this, but related in some part, on the, the complexes that are just converting to Live Local, these are already developed, are we on top of that issue too? Because it's something that I've been watching Pasco really clearly on, that they're in a complete uproar about, that I guess it's coming off their, the units come off your tax rolls, so we lose the ad valorem tax now. And what's happening is a lot of these landlords are figuring out, well, our AMI is already pretty close with the current residents we have, and they're converting and getting off tax rolls of the county, which is a real concern for revenue purposes for me. I know this is probably not a place to address it in the LDC, because it's, but I just want to make sure we're aware of that, and that, and I don't know if something has to be addressed through this process as it pertains to conversions. Because I think we have a couple that are already requested, is that right?
The ones that we have that have come to us are actually proposed for new, new facilities. We haven't had an instance of, of somebody looking to, to convert, at least through our permitting process. We will coordinate with Affordable Housing on, on any of those that, that may be, you know, existing uses that would be seeking to convert and try to identify if there are some opportunities to, to ensure that the intent of the, of the Live Local Act is implemented in that bringing a different type of expanding affordable housing opportunities, but see if there's opportunities for protecting against a use that is already existing and from, from having a negative impact on, on the county's ad valorem tax collection.
Yeah, because I think it does, right? If, if they do roll, if that does happen, like is happening in Pasco, that would impact our ability to collect our ad valorem on it, right? Is that how it works?
It, it does provide for an ad valorem exemption for certain, yes, affordable projects.
Yeah, that's something to be really cognizant of. That's something from the very beginning I just wasn't even thinking of, so I just want it to be on everyone's radar. Thanks.
Sure, thank you. Commissioner Wollstel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Adam, I know that the Senate in House, I believe, just passed even new changes to the Live Local Act, like yesterday or today, is that right?
Yeah, I saw, I believe it was, I believe it was engrossed yesterday. I know that, I know it's very, I know it's right at the end. I don't know if it was today's action on it. But yes, there were changes to it. I'd say that the changes to the act don't significantly change what we are doing in the, in the Land Development Code, in fact, perhaps may not change it at all. But we are, we are following those, those changes, and any updates that are, that are needed, we'll incorporate into this. There are some changes that were made as to the potential height of, of Live Local projects, as well as some changes to, to deal with parking and, and military bases in airport areas. So we are following those changes. It doesn't, the changes don't, won't have a significant change on, on the projects that we have seen at least come through expressing an interest in Live Local. But yes, we are, it is changing, yes, sir.
Okay, I guess, I guess my, what I'm, I'm still concerned with, our Land Development Code, it still dictates the certain rezonings that can have, right? Our, our rez nines and things like that.
Yes, we do list.
So I'm still worried about, and I, well, I guess what I'm still worried about is, you know, the legislature learned a valuable lesson where the city of Tampa prevailed last year, I think it was, on a law. And the architect of that law had to come out and be like, it's not, the court's opinion is not what we were trying to do with the law, but was irrelevant, because the court ultimately defined the law as it was written in favor of the city of Tampa on something. And I'm still very concerned that our residential nines still consider commercial slash, yeah, commercial applications, right?
The rez nine future land use category, yes, does allow for consideration of, of commercial uses, non-residential uses. It's either subject to commercial, commercial locational criteria or, or a waiver there too. But there, yes, there is, there is a potential for commercial uses to be considered in that, in those residential plan categories.
Okay, I guess, I guess really for my colleagues, what I'm trying to get is that I'm, you know, I'm really concerned, we have exceptional land use attorneys here in our own county that will absolutely use that. that will absolutely use that to our disadvantage, I think. And we can say whatever opinions we want, but ultimately, if they can convince a judge that rez nine by our own definitions considers commercial, that we don't really care what the county says. We just, we disagree, and we're going to go with the state's opinion that this is eligible for live local. And I just think that that's something we should address going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Well said. I don't see any other comments. So next item.
Next item, Land Development Code 240341, Private Railroad Crossings, Reading Authorization by Railline Owner. This amendment adds requirements for future development seeking private railroad crossings, including agrotourism activities to obtain reading authorization from rail line owners. All new development, including agrotourism activities crossing existing rail lines on private roads will be required to provide written authorization to the county by the rail line owner. The authorization from the rail owner will allow the opportunity to assess the type and amount of traffic that would be crossing the rail line to ensure the appropriate crossing controls are in place for safety purposes. And these new regulations will be incorporated to the Land Development Code, Section 60403, General Access Standards. And that concludes this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment, just good work on this, everybody. You know, this is real, real critical and important to my district. So great work. And thanks for expediting this and working with CSX too. Have they been, they've been working with you all pretty good as, as they said they would?
Yes, sir. They've been a very good partner with us in this effort. Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Next item.
Next item, LDC 240342, Wetland Setbacks Reduction. This amendment refines the instances where wetland setbacks will be, will provide functional protection to adjacent wetlands. It removes a requirement for a wetland setback when wetlands are approved to be impacted, creating a new wetland line. And the changes to the site would not have water flowing through the otherwise applicable setback area to the wetland. It incorporates also allowances for fences that do not impede the flow of strong water to be located within the wetland setback areas. And it also permits pools, screen, and closures to be located in portions of wetlands setback areas where pools are currently allowed. And Section 40107 of the code will be updated with these changes. And that concludes this item.
Questions, comments? Bar none. Last item.
Next item and last item is LDC 240343, Irrigation Plans Revisions. This amendment aims to reduce duplicative irrigation designs by eliminating the need for developers to submit an irrigation plan for review during the site and subdivision application process. It would eliminate a requirement for applicants to submit an irrigation plan. And this will increase the review efficiencies and also reduce, again, duplicate efforts when these plans are designed and the systems are designed. It will require that the irrigation design meets the code design criteria attested to by a Florida state licensed professional. That concludes this item.
Commissioner Wolstal?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm the, I'm the one that kind of brought this forward. And I just really wanted to thank Mr. Gormley. And you know, it's a, it was an issue where it was really making, unnecessarily making homes less affordable here in Hillsborough County. And they got to work and they, they removed this duplicity that existed. And, you know, this is just another one of those small efforts where we're going to continue to make homes coming to market more affordable here. So I thank everybody for their work.
Alright, I don't see any other questions or comments. So staff doesn't have anything else. I'll adjourn.